Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session here. And we are going to start, please, if everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, tonight, we have three topics on the work session agenda. So, thank you to everybody who is joining us here either in the boardroom or watching online. And we do need to adopt that agenda, so I would take that motion now, please.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt this afternoon's agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously six zero, Ms. Sismer. All right, we have two point zero one, which is going to be our bus schedule options. And there were quite a few documents associated with that. And so, Dr. Buck, do you want to lead this one up before Dr. Miller?
Yes, I'll have Dr. Miller come up while she's doing so. Just let you know that we have a shortage of drivers this year. And we have ten retirees going into next year. So, we are a little concerned, we don't have enough drivers to start the year unless we'd make some changes. So, Keith and crew, along with Dr. Miller, have been working on potential options for you. Some options are less palatable to us, like you could increase walk zones. But I'm not really excited about that for an equity issue. So, they're gonna walk through some different options and answer some questions for you as we go along. I would like to say that a year from now, we're gonna have to make a change. Because in the fall of twenty-two, we're gonna have sixth grade move into middle school. So, you're gonna have over a thousand three hundred kids move out of elementary into middle schools. So, there will be a natural change, it has to take place a year from now. The question is, do we accelerate it now in order to help alleviate the shortage of drivers we currently have?
Thank you, Dr. Buck, and good afternoon, Board. And I appreciate the lead in, Dr. Buck. Really, the purpose of this presentation is really for us to raise an issue that we're actively working through. And so, we're starting the process and the conversation now. First of all, I think it's really important that we recognize and show some appreciation for our transportation team. COVID has brought on so many challenges to our teachers, our nutrition services. But I'd be remiss if I left off our transportation team. They went through numerous iterations of scheduling and rescheduling. And as students enrolled and disenrolled, you know, all of that causes changes in bus routes and schedules and follow-through communication. And really, our transportation leadership really put their nose to the grindstone every step of the way. And really kind of worked those situations to support our families. Also, wanna send a big thank you to our students and families as they went through those changes, receiving those calls and having to adopt, you know, start times, end times, when to be at the bus stop. So, it's really been a team effort, and I just wanna keep that in mind as we head into this conversation. So, Board Priority One, meet each student where they are by utilizing an equity lens in decisions, actions, practices, and resource support. Transportation is an access issue for our families. And I think that's one of the things that we need to bear in mind as we go through this discussion and weigh all options. We know transportation is in charge of transporting our most precious cargo each and every day. They set the tone when kids get on the bus for what the day's gonna look like. They set the tone when they get off the bus. Our drivers have a meaningful impact. So, who makes up our transportation team? As of April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, we have over a hundred and seventy staff members that are part of our transportation team. You can look at the number of drivers, a hundred and ten. Again, that's not where we're typically staffed in a given year. Bus aides, standby drivers, and those are our experienced drivers that are available to substitute or do field trip requests. Our dispatchers, trainers, student safety team, mechanics, mechanic helpers, administrative assistants and leadership team. Robust team there each and every day to support students. So, why are we here? So, bus driver shortage is not a new topic. It's actually a national driver shortage impacting several industries. And here's a chart before you that looks at two thousand eighteen data. And I would suggest to you that has only worsened with COVID. But with COVID in a school district setting, because of reduced ridership, it's masked some of the issues that we've had with bus driver shortage. All school districts in the Kansas City area are experiencing this. And again, the pandemic with some of our hiring freezes when we went into closure really impacted that. So, this data is Lee Summit R seven data to look at what happened with staffing beginning March twenty-twenty to present. Again, when we went into closure, that's when we really put a hiring freeze. We had bus drivers at home, we were not filling positions at that time. And then, as school resumed and we had a restricted schedule, we started, we began the year by hourly, hiring hourly staff only. And then, we, again, in November, really put into place all of our recruiting efforts. So, that really demonstrates what's happened to our personnel and hiring over the last year. With that, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Keith Henry, and he's gonna dig into some of the data further with you.
Good afternoon. A little bit about the district and what we operate in. Obviously, some things just haven't changed, we're still a hundred and seventeen square miles, which is a relatively large district, one of the larger districts in the Kansas City area. Our ridership levels, they fluctuate a little bit. We peaked out in twenty-eighteen, nineteen with over fourteen thousand, then slid down to our average on the twenty-twenty, or nineteen-twenty year. But currently, we're at about seventy percent capacity. And now, we saw in the beginning of school year, a lower capacity. But as we rose throughout the years, parents and students became more comfortable getting back on the bus, we saw our enrollments go up. So, now, we're at about a ninety-five-hundred plus or minus. And it still fluctuates daily as students transition in and out of the district, they move around the district, and just different things happen. But also, what this doesn't include is of those ninety-five-hundred-plus kids, it doesn't include the numbers of students that have second seats. And that means kids that have maybe more than one bus stop. So, they don't reserve just one seat for themselves to and from home morning and afternoon. They have a morning seat, and then they have an afternoon seat maybe somewhere else, or vice versa. So, that, those students reserve two seats. So, if you counted that in, we'd be probably closer to ten thousand. So, that's something to keep in mind as we look at our numbers. Our driver shortage, it's always been there, it's nothing new, it's nationally. But we've been able to mask some of those concerns this year operationally because of COVID, as Dr. Miller said. As we came into this school year, we started looking because of operational changes and lower capacity, but also because of needs, because of staffing. How can we reduce our operations? So, individually across the district, we eliminated approximately twenty-nine routes, that's individual routes. And that resulted in a reduction of sixteen FTE positions or routes we didn't have to fill in this case because we didn't have the staff. Which, at a minimum savings, was a four hundred and ten thousand, it's just something to point out. The reduction wasn't due to savings, it just was a result of what happened. Also, with coming back into school, we had a hybrid schedule. And that hybrid schedule meant most of our career centers did not operate on Wednesdays. And I'm gonna focus on the Wednesday schedule a little later. But that's a significant day for us that we have to watch throughout the week, and I'll cover that here in a little bit for you. So, as we look at the next school year, I started preparing for the next school year, I started looking at our staffing needs for twenty-one, twenty-two. To operate right now unchanged and everything's back to normal, or our ridership rate goes to back to normal levels as they were in prior years, we would need at a minimum on a daily basis, so when I say daily, that's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, a hundred and thirty-four staff, okay? But what I'll focus on is the Wednesday, because Wednesday is the late start Wednesday, and once again, I'll talk about that here in a minute. We need a hundred and forty-four staff at a minimum, so we go up that day. So, look at our current staff of a hundred and ten drivers, and that goes up and down depending on losses and retractions. How many standby drivers we have, plus our retirees, and we know we have some that are just, they don't qualify return, but they just may not return. We're looking at a daily shortage minimum of twenty-four routes. When I say twenty-four routes, that's not individual routes, that's twenty-four buses. Each bus may cover three tiers, which could equal sixty routes, which could equal thousands of kids. So, that's at a guaranteed minimum, okay? Now, on Wednesday, that's magnified even more because we don't have enough substitutes to cover Wednesday. So, and I'll explain late start to you here in a minute. So, Wednesday, that even comes more significant. So, as we look at how we're currently operating, and this reverse triangle does it really well, we're heavy at tier one, that's the top. Right there's where we need everything we have, which is a hundred and thirty-four operators Monday during the day, daily operating. Now, keep in mind, as Dr. Buck alluded earlier, next school, not next school year, but the next school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, sixth grade moves to the secondary level. And so, with that comes a lot of students, which comes additional buses needed on top of that. So, it's real easy, if nothing changes, that first tier goes from a hundred and thirty-four buses to a hundred and fifty-two buses really quick. Which causes need for additional staff, additional equipment if something doesn't change. But then, we roll into tier two and three, which is much less. Tier two, we run into about a hundred buses, and then tier three went into a hundred and three buses. Now, once again, at those levels, on Wednesdays, it's ten more, and I'll explain that here in a moment. So, let's just say we don't do anything this year, we just wait a year. This is what you're looking at every day. Every day, you're looking at twenty-four buses with no driver. So, our only response is to get every office staff member to drive. So, as you saw on the previous slide, most of our office, most of our staff are drivers as well, including myself. So, myself included, go out and drive every day, including secretaries, everybody. That gives us fourteen more drivers, which still leaves you ten empty buses every day that we will not be able to fill, twenty on Wednesday. Keep in mind, this doesn't take into any count daily absences. Also, keep in mind, to do this, you're still gonna be ten buses empty every day and nobody in the office to answer phone calls. Respond to accidents, breakdowns, road construction, trash truck Tuesday, garage sale Wednesday, things of that nature, that impedes the flow. So, keep that in mind. So, even if everybody drove, we still cannot fill every role based on current staffing. So, going in a little bit more about the late start Wednesday, which is a challenge. Late start Wednesdays, we all come in an hour later, well, the LSR seven population comes in later. We have students that attend Career Centers, STA, CAS Career, Herndon, and Longview Community College. They still have their same normal bell time. So, those students that attend those classes still have to go at the normal time, not one hour later. And we have to provide that transportation for them. Now, where that becomes an issue is, as you saw in the triangle, we're heavy on the top on the first tier. So, we don't need as many drivers on the second tier. So, when those drivers drop off at the high school, we have anywhere from nine to twelve buses that stay there, then take those kids on to their career centers, whether it's CAS, Herndon, STA, or others. But when you have late start Wednesday, during that time, they normally be taking those students to their career centers. Now, they're engaged taking their actual high school kids to and from high, to high school. So, that is the reason we have to bring extra staff in at that point. They're not available because they're transporting their normal secondary students. So, we have to bring additional staff, which we don't have the subs to do. So, that becomes an issue. So, I hope that explains the Wednesday for you. So, looking at mitigation and how we're gonna do it. I'm gonna turn that over to Emily for a minute.
And I wanna stress the word mitigation, right? What we're proposing today doesn't fix the issue, it's mitigating the shortage that we have. And we really have it in one of three ways. Staffing, really kind of increase our recruitment and retention efforts. Decrease need, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. Reduce ridership and increase walk zones. Maximize staffing, and that's really where we get into adjusting the bell time. So, we move away from the upside-down triangle and look at how we can efficiently move staff through the three tiers. And then, the last option is really consider all three, and can we and should we be? So, in regards to staffing, we've taken some proactive measures over the last couple of years. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we identified internally in the district bus drivers as a group, an employment group as critical shortage. And what that's done is allowed us to go back and hire retirees to fill some of that need. In nineteen-twenty, Team Lee Summit recommended changing the range on the salary schedule for bus drivers, which was significant. And the department has also engaged in the following recruitment efforts. And again, I appreciate HR's work with transportation on really the advertising with Facebook, the banner buses, we see them all throughout the district. Flyers and Indeed. Other incentives, we have a referral stipend, two hundred dollars. Paid training, we pay for the permit and the CDL. We provide previous years of experience pay. And this, just this year, which is, which is kind of exciting, and I wanted to share this with you. We've had a big discussion about education requirements for bus drivers. Right now, or previously, our expectation was minimally a high school or GED. Well, we know there's a number in Missouri, the state of Missouri, it's approximately twenty percent of adults don't have a GED or high school diploma. And that was based on the two thousand census information. So, there's probably a pool of individuals that are safe drivers, could pass their CDL. And that, we've also engaged Summit Ridge Academy, and if they were to be employed, could we assist those employees with getting their GED and pass their HES? So, that's, that's an active discussion that we're currently having right now. Recognition, we, staff also received a safety award up to a hundred dollars and perfect attendance up to four hundred dollars. Staff compensation for our bus drivers. One of the things we've done is we've done a district-by-district analysis. And I wanna caution you as you look at this information, salary schedules, there's nuances to looking at that information. There's numbers of years and steps that each district can offer. So, the information I'm gonna provide you is based upon our starting, mid, and end step ranges. So, at the starting step, North Kansas City is, has the first spot, Raytown's in second, and ours is third. For our employees, the beginning step is at sixteen forty-one. At step nine, Lee Summit goes to the top of that comparison. And again, at step eighteen, it goes to the top at twenty-two ninety-eight. Again, keep in mind, there may be districts with more steps available to their drivers. Benefits, our benefit package is comparable. And then, really, non-district employers, you know, we're competing against outside, outside transportation companies. Where if they leave LSR seven, they could see an average hourly increase of five twenty-six, or an average hourly starting wage of twenty-one sixty-seven. So, another way to look at compensation is really look at the hourly guarantee. And it's common practice that bus drivers in districts receive a minimum guarantee of five hours a day. You'll see that Lee Summit is five hours, independent school district, based upon their schedules, ranges anywhere from five to eight. Blue Springs has a five, six, and eight. North Kansas City has a base hourly guarantee of six hours. Grandview, it ranges between six and eight, and Raytown is six hours. So, that's another area of compensation as we start to form recommendations to the Board, something for us to consider. I'm gonna turn it over, Mr. Henry.
Okay, so, once we move on from the staffing considerations and looking at recruiting and retention, we start looking at the operation as a whole. And that's where the walk zones and bell times come into play. Everything I'm gonna talk about here is just concepts, ideas, nothing is already pre-arranged or preordained or anything of that nature. All the examples that you're gonna see in the future are trying to balance out both the needs of the students, the start times, but also the end times. Because when you focus on the start time, you can't forget an end time. It's great to push something back, but then that pushes something else later. So, trying to balance all that out. Nothing that I'm gonna present as far as bell time options in the future, in a few minutes here, adjusts any walk zones. All walk zones are considered in this as far as staying as status quo at this point. So, as we go through this, it's first things first, is understanding what a walk zone is. In the state of Missouri, they have some statutes, Missouri revised statutes. The only requirement for the state is transporting any student that lives over three and a half miles. So, that is, so essentially, Missouri sets the walk zone at three and a half miles. The state will also reimburse students that live greater than one miles as part of their transportation formula. As a district, we have set the walk zone at half a mile. So, keep those three numbers in mind, three and a half miles is what's required, that or greater. One and a half miles, one mile or more is reimbursed, but as a district, we have set a half mile, okay? So, if we look at walk zones, and just as that part is, you have to look at that is, what would be the gain? So, as you start looking at where we're at, at the elementary and secondary level, if you just went from a half mile to a one mile marker, it would affect almost a thousand elementary students. But a hundred and eighteen secondary, there's no benefit at that point to increasing the walk zones and hurting families unless you can eliminate the whole route structure, which means secondary and elementary together. In order to do that, you would have to significantly increase the secondary walk zone. And so, if you increase the secondary walk zone, you may have to go out to two miles or more to generalize, to realize that benefit. And but, and even when you do that at the two mile marker, so to say, if you look at the one mile, elementary, two miles for secondary, you may only realize the benefit of six buses. And once again, that's not a huge impact. And that all depends on how the structure gets set up with schools too, depending how the schools are aligned, there may be not, no benefit. So, walk zones are not a lot of bang for the buck, but it is something to consider if need be. So, as we look at the walk zones too, it's nice to see what our neighbors are doing. We're at the half mile, there's some that have no walk zone, there's some that have a one mile walk zone, and there's one that has even greater than one mile walk zone. So, we're not off, but we're not in, we're, we're in there, in the mix of it there somewhere. So, next part would be maximizing staff time. And that's where you get into, how do you balance out your loads? And how do you balance out the buses so you can get the best units of buses? If we do it efficiently and effectively, we can reduce the needs. But as we're doing this process, you also have to consider a lot of other things that come into play too. And as you see, the outliers. We have CAS Career Centers, a lot of career centers, we have Great Beginnings, we have sports. All these things need to be factored in to the process of making a determination. But hopefully, when we're done, we do see a reduction in FTEs, which really means a reduction in open routes for us as a district. So, bell time options, there's an A, B, C, and D. You can start, okay. Okay. So, I'm gonna briefly go over this. So, currently, when you look at the, all the way to the left, there we go, there we go. We're on what you would call a three-tier system. We have a secondary on tier one, and then an elementary early and an elementary late. So, tier two and three. Each of the options we're looking at is based on certain criteria. With the main criteria being, try not to start too early, get out too late, but also, how do we maximize the effectiveness, effectiveness of our staff? And also, how do we maybe get and reduce the number of open routes for next school year? So, in looking at this, developed a four-tier plan and a five-tier plan. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean every driver's gonna drive four schools every morning and every afternoon, or five schools every morning and afternoon. It's adjusting their bell times, because also, each school level has a different amount of day from start to finish. Some are seven hours, some are six hours and fifty-three minutes, some are six hours and fifty-five minutes, so you have to balance that. Some schools require three buses, some schools require twelve buses, some schools need special ed vans, some need special ed lift vans. There's all different varieties of things that have to go into play here, it's not just a simple put the numbers up. So, as we look at this, the biggest difference is separating the secondary side. With middle school and high school on the same bell, logistically, the numbers that equals doesn't work, especially the pre, next year out, doesn't work. But we do know, because of, you saw the triangle, we have to break that up. So, the option A and B are kind of like twins, with the exception of middle school's early one, high school's early one. And with C and D, you have high school's early one. So, in this case, C, you're looking at that, high school is early and middle school is late. When you go to D, middle school is early, high school is late. But, but of course, they're not equal. Each level requires different numbers of buses, and that, as a result, when you move one early, one late, that shifts the elementary also. Because the elementary becomes the filler. So, you look at twenty-one, twenty-two, as you're moving things around and starting to think about the flow and the logistics of how the operation would work, you also have to look at twenty-two, twenty-three, when the sixth grade moves up. Because that puts an increased need at middle school and a decrease, a decreased need at elementary level. So, you have to balance the one. And then, in the red across the top, the focus is on Wednesday, because Wednesday was when we need the most help. How many open routes will that eliminate on a Wednesday? So, if you look at option D, for example, twenty-four next school year. So, instead of needing forty, thirty-four buses, you would need ten more. You wanna hire more staff than that though, because you don't want your office staff driving. That's why the need doesn't go away. So, is everybody following on this? Okay. So, as you look through options A through D, on this page, we've just kind of summarized what those changes are, so you can read them. But we also threw out some benefits and some concerns from our perspective. I'm sure benefits and concerns, others may come with some additional ones, but this was just our first run at it to give you something to think about and something to look at. Especially with the FT, FTE and the route opening reductions, those are very important. So, the other considerations that come with this, as I said earlier, we have to consider our outliers. And one major one is the Great Beginnings Program. Currently, they operate Monday through Thursday, with Friday as a non-attendance date for students. To make this work, we also have to utilize our Great Beginnings driving staff in a more advantageous way. They can help us on Wednesdays with late start, but only if they're off the Great Beginnings Program on late start. So, that being said, we need to shift them to make this work to a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday plan. So, Wednesdays, they can be available to help us on some of the other assignments that we have available for them. Whether it's a CAS Career Center, because we need them to leave early, things of that nature. We also need to build more time for them to do that, because we need to turn around that bus and time to get back to Great Beginnings, which means we have to give them the additional time. And for that reason, we're also including shifting their times back fifteen minutes. So, what this looks like now... So what this looks like now is it's shifting them back to what they were probably four or five years ago. This is how it was, I think it was approximately five years ago. So it's going back to the way it was before. We also got to consider utilizing contracted services. This year, because of the shortage, we would transport the students internally into Hilltop. But then we had a contract provider transport them home because it was right about three o'clock. And we did not have the staffing to do that. With Longview Community College, to help those students out and help that program out, we may have to consider alternative services for them as well, depending on how that program runs for next school year. But those are some of the considerations as well.
So as Keith mentioned earlier, you know, when we're talking about bell time adjustments, you know, it's what happens during the school day, but it's also the activities that happen after school. And so provided for you is the suburban conference area school start and end times. And I think if you look closely, you'll start to see some shifts happening. And I'm going to specifically point out high school. Liberty, Liberty North, you know, they have end times at three fifteen. Park Hill at two fifty-eight. So you've seen some districts that have taken some changes at their end times and adjusted their bell times. But I think as we weigh all the information, whether it's middle school or high school, that this becomes part of the discussion, activities has to be considered. So again, we're starting the conversation. We have been internally working at this from a logistics perspective. And I want to keep that in mind. This is a logistics issue, but it greatly impacts instruction. And we're acutely aware of that. We raised awareness with our principals and department leaders in April. And I want to be clear, we raised awareness. We are still looking for input from them to a greater degree. So in April twenty-eighth, we sent some broad communication to both our staff and our parents that we were exploring this as a possible issue. And today really kind of opens up that discussion. Our plan is really to seek some feedback through survey next week. Really, a very narrowed focus. Katie's already drafted a survey to families. And then we would take May and June to really analyze the feedback, reevaluate options, and bring back to you for another work session, June eleventh, with an intent for a recommendation, June seventeenth. Again, we want to start the process. We know feedback's important. We know this is going to impact children and students and staff. But wanted to offer what we thought was a process that would solicit feedback and input. So again, just in summary, you know, we're looking at mitigating the bus driver shortage. We know that there's a need next year, but we feel like we can address some concerns now. And any FTE reductions that we're talking about, no one will be losing their jobs. We're just eliminating vacant positions. I just want to make sure that was clear. And again, our intent is to bring forward a recommendation in June. We don't want to rush the discussion. We know input's needed. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Miller and Mr. Henry, thanks for the presentation. We'll take questions. And members, if you would also just like to discuss even among ourselves, that's obviously fine as well. So Board Member Campbell.
I, in reviewing this, and I appreciate that we're just starting the conversation because I think it is an opportunity to really think about what's best for our students, what the impact is to our families. I really appreciate that at the beginning of the presentation, you shared the importance of the transportation because that definitely is an equity, you know, aspect that we need to look at. Thinking about all of the additional transportation that we provide to the career centers and things like that, you know, I know over the years, that's increased. And we probably haven't acknowledged that increased transportation and the impact to the Transportation Department. I do have some concerns, and we heard some concerns in emails around just impacting some of the smaller subsets like our Great Beginnings transportation and the impact that that would have to those students that are getting that, those additional opportunities and the impact that that could have on their overall learning. So that was really concerning as well.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Board Member Campbell. And I believe Carrie Bame and her staff would agree, what's best for littles is Monday through Thursday for continuity of instruction. When we first started late start Wednesday, they did live the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. The other thing that I would offer is, you know, as we're, as, you know, we could evaluate staffing one year, two years from now. If we could move away from what we're discussing today, that could always be considered as well. But the point you raised, I think Carrie Bame and her team would echo.
Great, yeah, thank you, and I appreciate that. Because that was going to be one of my questions. So I'm glad that that conversation's already started with her as well for that input and feedback. I wondered, and I remember back to when we started late start Wednesdays, and I know the benefit of that planning time for our teachers. So when I ask some of these things, it's not that I'm a proponent or an opponent of anything. I'm just asking some questions. But if we could think back to why we started late start Wednesdays, because that seems to be a big bump in the road here, transportation joke. But if we could go back to the why and what alternatives we could look at around that late start Wednesday opportunity, that seems to be another avenue that could be considered.
I will take a stab at the instructional issues, and I may lean on some of my colleagues if they would like to add to it. You know, really, that collaboration piece is why we started with late start. You know, really having, giving staff the opportunity to sit down and talk students, look at student data, and make good decisions and planning. So I don't know if Dr. Kephart, you want to add anything?
I wouldn't say that I have too much to add because that is exactly correct. It's that opportunity to do some collaboration. And prior to this year, we had also added for our elementary schools once a quarter, some cross-district collaboration where groups of three schools in the elementary areas were looking at others in their grade level across the district, not just in their school. We have been doing data consults with buildings over the last couple of months, and will continue through this month. And much of what our administrators are saying, now that we have Panorama, now that we have NWEA, now that we're going to have the success dashboard, they want that time back with their teachers to truly look at the data to help drive instruction and to give time for that data. So we've been talking as an instructional operations team of a data protocol that we will be providing and looking to provide for our buildings so they can have those conversations at a building level data and then move into grade level content area, classroom review of data. So much more than what we have done this year, we've started that. We knew we were going to start that this year, but it would take a little bit longer since we don't have those Wednesdays like we have had in the past.
So help me understand a little bit, sorry, is it okay if I tag on to the question? Does that mean that it has to happen Wednesday morning? I realize, and I agree, and totally hear from everyone, how beneficial that time is. A time is. But does that mean that has to live Wednesday morning, I think is my question, as part of this overall evaluation?
Could I add to your question? We got a communication from a staff member who said, what would happen if you flipped that to an early release Friday? Would you be better off, or an early release Monday? Or whatever, it doesn't have to be Friday. But, you know, what would happen if you did that? Would you have still the same effect as far as bus drivers or what?
Yes, I'm. And I think we're just asking these questions. Not that I have a better idea, I don't. I'm just saying, are we asking all of these questions?
And I think that's where, from an academic standpoint, we have not had those conversations as our academic team on what that might look like is changing. So I'm going to send that over to Operations.
Just to jump in on logistics side, like if you went to early release versus a late start, you would probably shift the burden to the afternoon because they still get out at the same time. So we would be in the process of taking kids home an hour earlier while we'd have to bring the Career Center kids back home. So may just shift that burden.
I think the question she's asking though is, what about switching early or late start from Wednesday to a different day? And I think that's what they were trying to ask about. I can tell you that Fridays and Mondays are a higher sub-needs. And so if it's trying to maximize when we have adults together to collaborate, that's probably a piece there, but I don't know if that's a reason to stick with that.
I think it's something we can definitely investigate. I think Mr. Henry was trying to say that we would still run up against the Career Center in the afternoon, running the normal routes against the Career Center.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't mean to speak for the board members, I think in this particular case, that the late start or an early release Friday or early release whatever, early release Friday especially, alleviates the Great Beginnings issue at that particular point in terms of allowing them the Monday through Thursday that we know. But I think that that's just, that's a side piece of that in terms of knowing, obviously, that that would be a little bit better structure for those, for our Great Beginnings kids, so.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah.
Well, when with contract, if you are able to contract those, that out to our STA and all of that, then if that might help, right?
We've poked around at possibly other contracting. When you get to the STA, the CAS, and the Herndon, your numbers go up. So you can't just use like a cab company, you have to go to a bus company at that point. And unfortunately, they're in the same boat we're in. They don't have extras either.
And normally I call on others, but since we're on this particular discussion, when the second Great Beginnings facility comes online, will that eliminate satellite classrooms for Great Beginnings? And would that, will that end up helping alleviate some of these, any of these shortages?
I think it will assist, but I still think, I think it will assist. We still need to investigate.
That's fair for now.
Just for clarification, we have seven satellite classes now. But when we have our second center, we're anticipating that number to grow. So yes, it'll be one spot, so it'll be more centralized in the second spot, it's a seven. But we also expect to have more than seven classes of kids.
Okay. Board Member Fritchie, did you have other questions?
Yes, I do. I have one more on my list here. We checked off most of them. When you said you were going to do a survey, I heard you say families. Are we also surveying our staff or getting their input?
Yes, survey goes to staff and families.
Okay. And in terms of survey, what kind of a survey is that going to be? I mean, is it just going to be a base? Do you like A, B, C, or D, or what factors? What's that going to look like? Do we know?
I think Katie's drafted, I'll take an attempt at it if I feel free to come on up. So we are going, it's a two-pronged survey. If you feel like you're informed, immediately proceed to questions. If you feel like you need more information, Katie's got a PowerPoint drafted based upon our slides to bring everybody up to speed. It's really basically three or four questions. Impact of walk zones, is that a preferred? Impact of moving middle school, impact of moving high school, and an open response. Because I think there's a lot of information in here, whether it's Great Beginnings or activities where people need to have the ability to respond to more than just what those three basic options were proposing.
Okay, because, yeah, and the reason why I ask that is we have received some emails from some staff members. And, you know, any change you make, there's going to be a contagion of changes that follow. And, you know, a few of those involve, you know, our secondary schools, what time they get out. You said it impacted sports, you know that. But yeah, impacts those, for example, middle school coaches who go coach at the high school. The high school gets out earlier, the middle school gets out later. That may wipe out some coaches. So you're looking for more coaches then. So, you know, anything we do has that big ripple effect that happens there.
Sure, and I think that's why we need input, right? And give us the opportunity to kind of surface what some of those big issues are and kind of work those issues to the best of our ability.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Board Member Hedrick.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to ask several questions, and I'm not necessarily asking for a response. I'm just throwing these out here, okay? So bear with me. But I do agree with some of the comments from other board members. I do think we need to look at multiple options on how we address collaboration and what structure can best support that across the district. So I do agree with that. I also believe we need to continue to look for contract service opportunities for some of our one-off programs to the extent possible. So I just have two other quick things. One would be in terms of, maybe three, sorry. One would be in terms of, have we talked with our bus drivers and staff to determine what strategies they believe are most important to attract and retain other bus drivers? I know we've done a lot of stuff over the years, and I understand global. And I, again, I'm not asking for a response, but I'm just throwing this out here. But I do think that's important to go to the people who are impacted and to ask them for their opinions on what they think are the best things or what are the barriers or what are the challenges to getting people to drive. I know some of it is the hourly rate, probably some of it's the number of hours. All of those kinds of things. But I would like to really hear that from our drivers because I think that will give us good insight on how we might potentially attract other people. So that's my, hopefully, my last thing would be that, well, I'm sorry. I do have two more things, sorry. Would we use this issue as an opportunity to take a deeper dive into our start and end times? More so, you know, consistent with research on, you know, starting later for our older students, et cetera? Just a question. And then lastly, you know, back many years ago, when I used to be in transportation, I had the feeling that when the licensing requirements were changed to what they are now, we would be in a situation, as we are now, with a shortage of drivers because they weren't always licensed like they are now. And so I guess my question would be, is there conversations at the state level, at the federal level, to potentially look at licensing requirements for bus drivers? That's, and I'm, that's my question. So again, not asking for a response, but when we discuss again, I would like to have.
I can answer the licensing requirement. And as you asserted, yes, you were correct many years ago. It has been more challenging as the state and the CDL, for example, it's a commercial driver's license, actually regulated and governed by the federal government. It's applied by the state, but it's a federal license. And actually, they're turning the screws down to make it tighter. This February, we come into an entry-level driver training, which is a Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration regulation. But since I've been involved since nineteen ninety-four, we've seen a lot of changes. And it's all been for student safety in relation. But back in the day, you just needed a chauffeur's license, and you kicked the tires and light the fires and you go. Now you have pre-trip inspections, you've got all kinds of different regulations, what you do on the south side, like your driving record is affected. Everything is in there. And I look forward to get more stringent now as we walk into, there's physical agility testing now, which is the big play. And the National Transportation Safety Board is pushing that and trying to mandate some of those types of things. So I look forward to get more restrictive as we go forward, I'm sorry to say.
And if I can add to that, we do pay drivers during training phase. So they, we'll hire you and then try to help coach you through that process. I don't, a lot of districts don't do that. So I can't think Ethan has proved enough for that. I also think that we're seeing a logistics shortage, not just bus drivers, but trucking companies and Walmart and everybody else. And so you're seeing an escalation of wages in that field as well. So as a first-year truck driver for Walmart, you might make ninety thousand dollars a year now. If you'd have said that ten years ago, that would have been laughed at. But now that's what you get paid, so.
And I guess that's the other thing would be, is do we feel like that hourly rate? Increasing that alone, to me, probably is not going to really solve the issue. It may temporarily, but I do think that we need to try to, you know, open up every option that we have and try to come up with a best strategy because I don't think it's just going to be a short-term problem. It's probably going to, you know, continue to be that for us, so.
Well, and on the minimum, just to add to what Judy's saying, on the minimum number of hours, I know that we had an employee from here go to a different school district, and they're getting a minimum of six hours a day where we give a minimum of five hours a day. So that's an extra hour of pay every day that they're getting. So, you know, I know those are dollars that were precious dollars. So, you know, I know those are dollars that were, were precious dollars in our school district, but we need to do that.
So for fellow board members, bear in mind, the state of Missouri doesn't fund the transportation the way that they are supposed to. And so I was just asking Dr. Buck what that number is. We're short $4 million this year of what we should have been receiving if they were funding it up to the statute, up to the, it's 70%, right? Is what they should be, 75, that they need to be funding. Oh, how we could use that, right, in, in this particular case, to, to try to get either qualified drivers, to increased drivers or increased driver pay, you know, or both. So that would be another area to perhaps make a few phone calls if you feel inclined, so. Board member Campbell, did you hit, did you hit yours again? Go ahead, and then board member Alan, I do have you after that.
I just thought it might be helpful to review, helpful for me and probably helpful for a lot of people, to review a little bit, was it last year or the year before that we did a consolidation study around routes? And what did that entail? And would there be benefit? Not, you know, one alternative is increasing the walk zone, one alternative is consolidate routes where kids walk a little bit further to their bus stop. I'm just throwing that out. Can we review what that consolidation of routes looked like and when we did it?
Sure. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but what that did, you know, was you look at operations logistics, you want to pick the low fruit first. We had stops probably every 400, 500, 600 feet, and that was K through 12. So what we did at that point, that became a logistical barrier in that we ran out of time before capacity. So it wasn't uncommon to see a bus on least some a school district that was only 50% capacity, give or take a little bit. So what that did was allow us to streamline bus stops instead of going in and out of every street and eating up a lot of our time, where we had eventually just stop and get to school to get them to time, to school on time. That now we can move the stops to corners and intersections, would allow that bus to go straight through. So now, instead of just covering maybe one or two neighborhoods, they could cover three or four neighborhoods. So that was part of the fruit to help us minimize and once again mitigate that driver shortage. We know there's been a driver shortage. It's been here since I've been here for seven years. So that was another part to help us with that. But it also, at the same time, allowed us to start later in the mornings to allow students now, they didn't have to catch the bus so early. So if a student could walk five, 10 minutes to a bus stop, that bus could also start 20, 30 minutes later and get there on time. So it could actually cover more distance theoretically, and in reality it did, but also even do it in a quicker amount of time and get more students on board. So that was a part of it too that helped us out a lot. I hope that, did that explain it well?
Yeah, that was a great summary. And was that two years ago, or when, how long ago was that?
That was probably three years ago with the CFMP process, two years ago maybe.
Can I ask a follow-up question to her question? In terms of the consolidation, would you be able to provide us information into the impact of that had in terms of bus capacity to ridership? Does that make sense, what I'm asking? What percentages of our buses' capacity are we using as a result of that consolidation? Does that make sense?
Because I had the same question, Judy. Perfect. No, that's awesome.
It does, it does, as, as, you know, and if you want the exact numbers, I'll have to come back to you on that, okay?
Board, board member Alan?
Thank you, President Murdock. It's been, you know, checking off the items. And Ms. Campbell asked about, you know, late starts, if that's something that can slide. Dr. Hedrick asked about the possibility of examining collaboration and when, if that's a poss, you know, possible consideration to continue collaborating, doesn't need to be on Wednesday mornings if it is mutually exclusive to, you know, the ideal transportation situation. Ryan, you asked about, I'm sorry, President Murdock, Ryan, right, Murdock. I had a question here, and that might be a Dr. Buck question, but I think you hit it. I don't know if you want to go into any more detail, but that is state funding, right, on the transportation issue? Is that just a complete dead issue? Is that something we're going to see any increases, any acknowledgement of increases, any thought of where that might go into the next couple of years?
So the budget gets approved tomorrow by 6:00 PM. I do believe both the House and Senate put a small, but different amount. Am I remembering that right, Keith? So they're in conference right now, so, but both of them are small increases. So we're in the teens right now. I can't remember if it's 18 or 19% funded. And like I said, we're supposed to be funded at 75% by state statute. I can't, it's been.
Marginal. It's not going to make or break a difference, right? Okay. We talked about contracting. I think that needs to be considered as well. Dr. Hedrick mentioned that. Start date, or start date, start latest, starting later possibility for older students. So one thing that was said early in this conversation was that, you know, we need to look at 2021 issues, right, for this fall. And then we may actually end up seeing some changes for 2022 as well. And I apologize publicly to Dr. Emily Miller, because I kind of hit her without question early as to, we're, we're talking about changes for this fall, but then we may have to make changes again for next fall. So, I mean, I don't know if that's indeed the case, maybe the case. I just, it's difficult when we've just seen a year of, you know, chess match, right?
The bell time plans that you have before you look at both next year and the year following.
Right, okay.
Hope we're, it's an attempt to look down the road.
Yep, okay. Because we'll probably need to look at changes, possible changes for '21, possible changes again for '22 in some scenarios. We don't know what those are yet, right?
All four scenarios, take into consideration '21, '22, '22, '23, and maintain consistency for both years.
Okay, that's helpful.
So I think what we're trying to say is in '22, '23, if we don't make a change now for next year, we will have to probably make a change for '22, '23, because we're shifting 1,300 kids from elementary to secondary. Or we could make a change a year earlier to try to help out with the, the bus.
Logistics, yeah. I, I just, I mean, I kind of roll back and say, it gives us a year if we were to change '22, '23 without shuffling in '21, '22. And maybe that's not possible, and maybe we have to do both. That's all I'm, that's all I'm kind of verbally throwing out there is we've just had a year to year and a half of dramatic changes and.
We're wrestling right there with you. 100% agree. We'd like to wait till '22, '23. Unfortunately, our driver pickup is onboarding, we're not, and we have 10 retirees, which Keith did not expect to have 10 retirees this year.
Understood. Is there, sorry.
The only thing I would add, and Keith downplayed it, but I think it's, it's something to know. I think there's a risk assumed by the district when you have your office staff out, your sub-drivers out, and you have constant changing in bus drivers. And so I, I have real concerns with that, and I wanted to voice that.
Sure. What about thoughts of, and I'm sure this has been tossed as well, new question maybe. What do we need to do to align or mirror the schedules for STA, CAS, Career Center, these other partner programs? I mean, is there an ideal scenario out there that says, if they're not changing, what can we do? What can we do to, to, to mirror as best we can with those schedules, or is that even possible?
I'm, Dr. Andrews, you want to come up too? I don't know. This has been a big topic for us internally, exactly that. Because STA is aligned with all the other districts to a certain degree, so we don't want to move them. We don't want to, you know, obviously Herndon and CAS are going to move, just a few kids go to CAS, but Herndon, we have a decent number. So that, I'll let Dr. Andrews talk about that, and wise up if you have an athletics question. That's another thing we've been wrestling with.
Now, STA is, is probably the most complicated, because it has the largest number of districts and high schools. I believe we have 31 different high schools now that send into STA. And it, you know, it's a complicated schedule, and it kind of works in its spot right now. Just as a point of clarification, when we are talking about moving high school later in some of these scenarios, we are potentially talking about leaving STA in its existing spot. So it might be a bit different than our high school spot, and that helps all of those routes still work and arranged through that. So we've been doing a lot of work with our APs who work with those programs, Herndon, CAS, STA. And it actually will still function if those stay at the same, even though our high school students may move later in the day. It adjusts a student, they may take four classes back at their school instead of three and only miss two in the morning, vice versa for a morning or an afternoon, but it still can work. But what doesn't work for us is to slide STA with our high school students and mess up 30 or 28 other high schools besides our three that are trying to get them there. So hopefully that made sense.
Well, I'm just saying, they're going to be the constant that probably can't change, or there are other ways that we can adapt to that schedule so we're not having to juggle the routes or what have you, that's all. And one last question, I'm backing up a little bit, and it gets into the Great Beginnings, Early Childhood Center. So two Mondays, basically, right? You'd have a Monday, Monday, and then Monday becomes Thursday, or Thursday becomes Monday for these families. I know those are word salad. I didn't mean that to be the case. But a day off for those families is a difficult day off, as you've mentioned. The numbers that we deal with at pre-K for Great Beginnings are what? The number of kids or number of families? Do you know offhand? And then also, is that number going to increase when we add capacity at per review or other considerations down the road?
I think that's the intent, right, to expand programs. Dr. Mathis, I'm going to guess 350, is that? Okay.
All right. I mean, it's significant.
It is, it is, and you know, keep in mind, you know, it's a 50% turnover at Great Beginnings. So your three-year-olds are all new, and that, that grows over time as students become eligible. So the program actually, enrollment expands over the course of the year.
Okay, and as education goes, and I think the idea at LSR VII is to start education at an earliest possible age, which that number would increase over time, right? So we're at 350 today. What is it, what happens in '23? Does it go to 500? Does it go to 800?
That's a little bit of a tricky question, because all of those programs have specific criteria to meet, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, it's just, it's a significant number. It's a huge benefit. We've made that commitment there for years, starting with, you know, Judy Nolan and the Workhorses that established probably the best program in the state. So I, I don't want to minimize any, anything there, so thank you.
And I think, Mike, also on the Great Beginnings issue, you know, a lot of times we're transporting them longer distances because they're coming from all over our district. We need to keep that in mind, that a lot of times we have specialized transportation needs that are coming to Great Beginnings, so that adds the complexity. I'm sure, Mr. Henry, in terms of scheduling those buses, I can attest, because my kid rode one of them to Great Beginnings, and so, you know, I mean, he was traveling a long distance, you know, to go to, to Great Beginnings every single day. So that certainly adds just another layer that we have to keep in mind. Board member Campbell?
Just, I wanted to add one thing. I just wanted to say thank you for starting this investigation now, for communicating it here, as well as to the public and to our parents, you know, to the people that are, that are potentially impacted. Starting that conversation now, starting the investigation now, doing the surveys, doing all of that communicate, all of those communication people, pieces to help people be engaged. I just wanted to say thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask just a couple of questions here, board member Fritchy. While we have you up there, Dr. Andrews, what's the average start time of our activities and sports for our high schools in the evenings? Out of curiosity, not practices, I'm thinking more competitions.
That's a big question.
Thank you.
Thirty-some, you know, sports and sub-varsity, varsity, you know, we start as early as four, we start as late as seven.
And I guess ultimately I would ask the, the following, it, how many sports do start in the afternoon versus in the evening? I think it's probably where we would be looking, right?
More of our varsity sports are later in the evening. Most of our sub-varsity, you know, start earlier. Several at five, you know, some as early as four. You know, the concern with moving high school is kind of that negotiation with, you know, all the other conference schools. We have a little bit better opportunity to set our home start times. We have less opportunity to set the start time of games on away games that they go through. And, you know, the concern with too many early games and being late is just how much time students miss from classroom. So if they're having to leave to get to Park Hill or Liberty or somewhere further away, have an earlier game, and we have students being dismissed in the middle of sixth hour, seventh hour to go, we want to minimize that. That's one of the reasons as we, we looked, you know, there was an hour late start, or an hour movement on that, which would have taken us to 3:30. And when we surveyed all of the other conference schools, looking at Liberty being the latest one at 3:15, you know, a couple at three, went back to transportation, said, can we back that up any? What are options to make that a little bit better? Because at 3:30, we would have had significant numbers of events where kids were missing class and having to get out early to make it to their games. At 3:05, 3:07, 3:10, you know, those different options that we start looking at there, that reduces that quite a bit.
I appreciate that answer. That's, that's good. In terms of, you know, one of the things that's mentioned in the, in the presentation is decreasing ridership essentially. My question on this would be, is, is, is there any incentives to offer parents to continue the transportation of their students to and from school to lessen ridership?
There has not been discussion at that, on that point at this point.
Okay, and then the other two questions that I have here is, and I understand that we could continue to flesh out these particular options and stuff like that, is I am curious why Sunset Valley and option two becomes the lone outlier in, in option B there?
Yeah, that's a very good question. It's been asked a lot of times, trust me. But the reality comes down to the balance, and, and part of that balance is special needs buses and specialized buses, and they have a high need. So in that scenario, the only school that fit into that spot was Sunset Valley.
Okay, and, and that was going to be my question in regards to the medically fragile program there, is, is why they ended up getting put there? Okay, and then my, my last question is, and it kind of backs up to what Dr. Hedrick mentioned earlier, is, you know, typically speaking, we know that later starts would be preferable for older students, which of course would then upset, frustrate people of younger kids. I understand that in this particular regard. Is, is, as this conversation goes, is there a way to take a look at essentially moving everything, even 30 minutes later, to alleviate or make some of these other changes? For example, a elementary school instead of starting at 7:35, you know, or 7:17 for some of these things, starting at 7:47, 7:57, that kind of thing? Because I do worry about any solution that, that makes things earlier. Because as, you know, and I sent you, Dr. Miller, you know, one of the questions of the earliest time that we have kids boarding buses, if we back up start times even, you know, by a little bit, asking kids to be out even earlier becomes a pretty tough sell, I think.
And that's a good question, Mr. Murdock. We, we do consider that. As you adjust later, that affects the afternoon time. So if you adjust, for example, the 9:00 AM schools and start them at 9:30, that puts them out at 4:30. And everything correlates, and eventually you get to that point, how late do you want to get the kids home to? And that became a concern as well.
Okay, and even, board member Fritchy, before I get to this, before I forget, obviously to all members, and this would go to even people who might be watching, you know, if, if we have questions that we don't get to tonight, send them to them over these next few days so that we can continue to have things answered as, as we go forward. Board member Fritchy?
Thank you very much. Yeah, my question was relating to the after-school activities too. And, you know, I think having worked in a middle school where most of the games start at four o'clock, you know, and so if you're adjusting middle school times later, how's that going to affect those, those times? If you adjust them earlier, they might be fine, you know, but the other school's getting here and that kind of thing. So I mean, I know there are all kinds of considerations, and it's just a big jumble for you all. I know we're not going to make everyone happy with this. It just, it's impossible to make everyone happy. But I think conducting a survey is a, is a good idea, as long as we allow folks some space, maybe an open spot to make some comments, to, to come in on things that we haven't asked them on the surveys. And, or welcome them to send an email to provide their input to you all, who to, who to send those to, so that, so that we feel like they are heard. But also on the survey, I want our public to understand too that a survey is not a vote. We're not voting on which one we want. We're giving input on which one would work best for our family or for our school or for me, myself, that the person who's filling out the survey. So those are all my comments. Thank you.
That's correct. Board member Fritchy, we, on the survey, there will be an opportunity for an open response. So we can, because I, I do think it's more than just bell time, walk zone issues. There's several factors we need to consider.
I told board member Marshall before I forget, Dr. Miller or Mr. Henry, could you guys put together a financial impact of raising the guaranteed hours so that we could see that? I think, I think that that's important, because a lot of times we, we typically focus on the hourly wage. But the guaranteed hours probably is actually even the more important part at this particular time of if we would raise it to six or maybe even seven based on what our. of if we would raise it to six or maybe even seven, based on what our employment status is, how many drivers we actually have, of what that financial impact would look like. I'd appreciate it. Board Member Marshall?
My question was along the lines of the athletics conversation. I'd be curious to see, and we probably already have the data, it probably already exists, with the shifting times and all that, how many of our teachers that are coaches and volunteering the different activities, would that impact the activities? If you have, you know, going to different buildings and things like that, would that put an additional strain also in the athletics or in the after-school club area as well?
Yeah, activity, the biggest strain, the biggest number of traveling coaches comes from our middle school teachers who coach at the high school. So if you end up with middle school out later than high school, that is the most significant impact to coaching access, where they would get there. We have elementary staff who coach at middle school, we have some elementary at high school. I think there's one high school that goes to middle school. So there's a, a lot of back and forth, but the largest impact, we probably have 15 or 16 coaches that do high school sports that are in our middle schools that move up.
And right now, those elementary coaches do show up to practice late. So we have some of that, but this would be a lot more of that.
Board Member Sparks?
I don't have much to say, other than thank you for your presentation. But also, I just want us to be very intentional when we're reaching out to our staff and to the community stakeholders of getting information. And so if we see that we're not getting the responses through maybe a survey, then we probably want to look at other avenues to be able to get that engagement, so we can get that true feedback, especially when we have a short amount of time to make that decision. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from board members? Thank you for the, this starting point. I mean, I think that's what we're, we really are calling it, right? This is the starting point. So anybody who is watching the work session, please be looking out for the opportunities to give feedback. I think Board Member Sparks, that's a good point, we want to make sure that we get the engagement back on this. So, and then to other board members, just remember, please keeps in and questions in, because I'm sure you'll have them on all of these different options. As we get into 2.02 and 2.03, just to my fellow board members, remember, we do need to, because of the MSBA meeting, we need to be concluded at 6:30. So just keep that in mind as we go through these other two topics, okay? So 2.02 is our Team Lee Summit salaries study. And so I think we are, are we starting Dr. Buck and then Dr. Del Sim? Or do we just want to go straight to Dr. Del Sim?
I'll start, and while they come up, it's the presentation by the D, so Deanna is here, David's here, Deborah's here, and I'm here. So just to let you recap, if you will, go to the second slide there, whoever's running it. We did have, in the spring of 2020, the board in March, literally the day before our last day of in-person school, March it turned out, charged the Team Lee Summit to look at salary study. This is based on past history of some freezes, but yet give big raises at the same time. And that caused some issues where, giving you an example, I'm gonna make it pretend, so Board President Murdock and I say, we both have 12 years' experience. He was within the district, so he, three times, had been frozen, because he was here for all three freezes. He is on step nine, but he got more raises. But then I come in, hired, this is my first year in the district, but it's my 12th year, and teaching, I'm on step 12. So I got the benefit of those big raises, plus I got three more steps. So it created an issue when your, your peers had very similar experience, but you're on different steps. And so the, that's what the charge was, Team Lee Summit was fantastic looking at this. They would often give David and Deanna scenarios or questions, they would go, they'd actually run actual numbers. We had some fun in some conference rooms, throwing things up on the wall and, and running through numbers, and they really came down to four or five options, or, and they're gonna talk to you about the two options that the Team Lee Summit actually came up with a hybrid answer. And depending on the budget tomorrow, I think we can do phase one of this, this year. So just letting you know, in, in May, board meeting, it very well may be that we're gonna say, we're recommending phase one. Letting the cat out of the bag before you even see it. But with the one piece, we were waiting on several pieces. The last piece we're waiting for is the budget. It looks like we're fully funded, both the House and the Senate both agreed, so it should not be going to conference. So we should be in a spot where, when they came to that agreement last week, when the Senate agreed with them on fully funding the formula, we should be good to go. So I anticipate two weeks from now proposing that we do phase one, so I'll turn it over.
All right, thank you, Dr. Buck, and thank you, board. It was about this time last year, as Dr. Buck said, that we were given the opportunity to work on this. And Team Lee Summit, as you know, stands for Together Everyone Achieves More. And the team really took this opportunity on. We had a special meeting in August, which jumpstarts our team meetings early. It was an all-day meeting to begin solving this salary study and how we were going to approach it. And Board Member Allen sits on that team with us, former Board Member Julie Doan is on that team as well. And we had this on our agenda every single meeting all year long, so we really worked the problem. A recap of what we're going to talk to you about. We're, we'll talk about what you already approved this year for our employees, for every employee group, the phase one, the phase two recommendation from the team. And then I think Dr. Buck will wrap us up with what we're looking at ahead. So just as a reminder, for our employee groups this year, Team Lee Summit brought to you in March, as they do every year, their recommendation for our employees, and this year, with the salary and benefit recommendation, it was a 4.1 enhancement to the schedule, and that's what you did in March for our groups. So we'll move forward to the recommendation for phase one. And I just can't thank enough the team, as well as those who supported us, Deanna, David, technology as well, helped us out pulling a lot of data.
Yes, thank you. We get to add another D to that, Dan Mullen was a key in data systems to this as well, so I hadn't made that connection yet. So I want to draw your attention to the slide there, where you have a lot of information that I'm gonna walk through and kind of talk through that the team developed. So with this, if, what the Team Lee Summit's recommendation through that collaborative process, phase one, this table, I'm gonna walk you through the first, the first section, which is the Schedule Administrator, Professional, and Support. As you know, we have four salary schedules. For those three groups, phase one would really look at the 2017-18 move that Team Lee Summit and the Board of Education did, where dollars were focused on enhancing the base of the salary schedule, and a step was not given. For current employees, they would, in phase one, get that step from 2017-18. That would affect, in the different groups, 92 administrators, 90 professional staff, and 678 support staff. You see there the salary cost. Next, retirement taxes, obviously with salary, you know there's an increase when you include, include the retirement benefits and the taxes that go with that, for a total dollar amount for that phase one, for those individuals on that schedule. Next, we go to the teacher group. We know that the teacher salary schedule is built and designed differently. We also know, as Dr. Buck alluded to, the board policy is very specific on how teachers get placed when they come in. So in alignment with board policy, phase one would take teachers and move them one, for those teachers who years of service do not match their step placement, phase one would move those teachers one step towards their years of service matching their step placement. You would see in there, 926 teachers would be affected. And then we would also have another 99 teachers that would move off the salary schedule, beyond the steps we have, for a total of 1,025 teachers impacted by that movement. And then you see again, the dollar amounts that would go with that. This is based on data from February, that we presented to Team Lee Summit when they made that decision. So resignations, retirements, some of that will impact these numbers a little bit. But you see, the total of phase one would be around $2.7 billion. Let's talk about phase two. On that slide, you see, and I just made the change here, to phase two. This would complete the transition, based on the charge given to us by the Board of Education. Again, I want to draw your attention to the first three groups. They, in same fashion, the 2019-20 year budgeted dollars for salary enhancement by Team Lee Summit, the Board of Education, were allocated to the base of the salary schedule. For current employees that were here, 2019-20 school year, would they would get that additional step to their pay, their pay, to their comp summary or contract? You see the numbers of staff impacted by that move, and then the dollar amount that goes with it. For teachers, you'll see that the remaining steps for years of service to match their step placement would be impacted. That's approximately 575 teachers and the cost that goes with that. So that moves folks, and we had multiple phases and up to seven phases, but that's gonna move the rest of our teaching staff to where their years of service will match their step placement. And some teachers will, at this point, move one more step, and some will move up to another five or six steps. Again, the total cost for phase two to be implemented would be $2.4 million. And you see the number of staff, again, as I mentioned before, that are affected by these movements. With that, I believe we start talking about the budget that goes with the program.
So Team Lee Summit was fantastic, and you, of course, you know it's made up of support staff and certified staff as well, as well as some board members. They were very kind in saying, can we afford to do phase one this year? Should we wait till next year? I, I think we can afford phase one going into next year. What will be interesting is, we opened a middle school, not this fall, but next fall, a new building, and that's gonna have some costs with it. It may be that we can afford phase one and two back-to-back years, or maybe phase one, we can afford for next year, have to miss a year and come back and get phase two. We'll just have to see how the budget goes and what the needs are, as, as middle school number four comes on board. But this slide here, you can kind of see where we are at the end of March. We're, we haven't quite closed the month of April yet, so you'll have that in the finance report here in two weeks from now. But you can see, we're 3.1 million up in our fund balance at the end of March compared to the prior year. We have with that, $3.4 million have come from federal aid due to COVID. But we also know that we've had 1.0, I think it's 8 million, off the top of my head, lower amount because of some of our programs, we've kept whole, and services whole, while we didn't have revenue, for example, BASS and food service and such. When we look at, we do have some ESSR funds coming forward. But we also know that we had, in that 3.4 million, only part release of the 2.1 million that was withheld in July. So that's the July of 2019, should be 2020. The federal, or, sorry, the governor withheld some of our funding formula in July, that was decided in late February to release, we got part of that in March, and the rest of it, we got in April. So you'll see the full release of that funds withheld, when you have the financial report here coming soon, and it'll be greater than the 3.4 million we've had, as far as the difference in fund balances. Should be greater than what we've received from federal. So we're in good shape this year, we've been good stewards of our dollars. Next slide. As far as going to next year, so one of the things you have to look at is, we, you know, the big piece for us is almost two-thirds of our funding comes from local. You're allowed to increase, according to the CPI, on existing assessed valuation, so that's been set, 1.4%. So we know we'll increase 1.4% revenue. We also get to increase all of new construction and new property. So right now, it looks very good, from what we're talking to the county assessor, that we have actually quite a bit increased in new construction. So we know funding on, on the local side's gonna be in good shape. New construction is up prime, based on those preliminary conversations. State funding formula, we're about 30 something percent funded by them, and that does look to be in good shape. We are about 4% federal. We look to be about down $20,000 is what the preliminary, which just came out this week, but virtually the same. So we, we look like we're gonna be okay, going funding for next year. So I think for sure, based on how we're ending this year so far, and, you know, unless something major comes forward, and also what it looks like next year, we'll be okay. We're also gonna get ESSR three money, supposedly around October. When I say to get the money, you don't get the money, you have to spend it and then ask for reimbursement. Federal government, they don't give you the money ahead of time, you have to spend it and get it back. They don't want you earning interest on their dollars. So with ESSR three, I know we're gonna try to set aside a couple million dollars for a plan to help with the gap that we have from some of our students due to COVID. And so, but the rest of it, we're gonna look at one-time monies we can alleviate from the budget. So our average bus, for example, we were just talking about transportation, is 10 years old. Do we look at some busing? Or do we start looking at some of our dream big down-the-road pieces, like, you know, a facility for, for student health? So we're looking at some other pieces there as well. As far as the formula, it's built on the weighted average daily attendance you have, and they look at the current year or the best of the prior two years. So we, we are guaranteed to have at least the, the average daily attendance we had last year. So we're, it should be good formula-wise going forward. And then summer school ADA is from summer of 2021, so that's what funds the formula next year. And right now, we have a recent record, I don't know how far back we look, but we have over 3,000 kids in summer school. So, so we're, summer school ADA has returned, whereas last year it definitely went down, which impacted some funding pieces. Because they do not look at best of, of the prior or prior two years. They only take the current summer school for, in the formula. So with that, I'll stop saying we can, we, I think we can afford it. I just want to wait till 6:00 PM tomorrow, when they're done, to, you know, make sure. But it looks like we're gonna be able to afford phase one, and I anticipate coming forward to you on, on May 20th with a recommendation to enact phase one of the plan that Team Lee Summit has come up with.
Appreciate that. Board members, questions, comments, discussion? Board Member Campbell?
Thank you, Board President. I pulled out at the beginning of my term last year as a new board member. The CFO had completed an operational budget over the next five years. And I appreciate all of this information that you've provided in the slides, that's great. But it would be really helpful, not just to think, to me, not just to think about the impact of this year, and can we afford it, but for me to see the impact of this decision over the next five years, so that we can see that impact to the overall budgets going forward. Because we do know, with a lot of the capital projects from the bond coming to fruition, like a new middle school, we've got added operational costs, you know, from that as well. So the big picture of everything, to me, would be really helpful to see the impact of this decision.
Yep, we're working on that, and we're planning on having that for you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Board, Board Member Hedrick?
Yes, I'm struggling a little bit with trying to figure out how we determined who the staff are that are considered, quote, "the eligible staff", especially in the teacher group, because that's only a portion of our staff. And I guess I feel like, as a board member, we should have a clear understanding of how that was arrived at and who, when people talk with us, we know, we're all saying the same thing. So I, I guess I'm, I, I would like to know that. And then, secondly, I'm assuming, so correct me if I'm wrong, on the numbers between phase one and two, in terms of the administrative, professional, and support, those numbers are different because of the people that were hired as of July 1 of 18. Is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate. The number is more because you have more current employees that have been hired at that point.
That's, that was my assumption. But on the teaching staff, I would like to have that, some background information, so that we are able to answer that question on who is considered the eligible employee.
I'm gonna start it and let you finish, all right? So this is, the teacher is like, I can't remember, option C, and then administrative, professional, and support was option D. So teachers were frozen three times, and everyone else was frozen twice, so the years don't necessarily match. And so what they chose as a, as a committee was a hybrid between the two. And then with teachers, if you go back to pre-EMS, you look at placement as well. So you got, not only the, on teacher end, you have the placement of when I was hired and how many of those freezes I had, but also the change of EMS placement. So there's a difference there, whereas administrative, professional, support, it was a lot messier, so they looked at just the two steps. So no, no support staff, professional, or administrator would get more than two steps over the two phases, but there are teachers that get as many as seven steps over the two phases.
Yep. And the methodology for, for doing that, good question. And there was a lot of ways we looked at data. And that's where business services, data systems, that those teams came in. And essentially, we pulled the data by looking at teacher start dates and their step, and picture a massive spreadsheet for every teacher in our district with a column that shows every- with a column that shows every year since 2008. And then where their step was moving forward. And then our data systems team converting steps to numbers and then putting in calculations to see how their step matches to the year they were hired. Because our board policy is very specific on when teachers are hired, where they are placed on our salary schedule. So that data point was a constant that then we were able to use moving forward each year through the contracts that they received to the current year. So I'll go back and summarize. The eligible teachers are based on their step placement from the year they were hired, going back to 2008 is the earliest, because that's what's in our B plus system. And then matching that moving forward. And getting their years of service based on their hire date or 2008 to match their years of service. And we do have employees that would move one step, as Dr. Buck mentioned. We have some that will move up to seven. And then we have some employees whose step already matches their years of service or is above.
Do you want me to go to somebody else? Or do you want to continue, Dr. Hedrick? Okay. Board member Allen?
Thank you, sir. I wish I had a roster of all of our Team Lee Summit members because to a person, each one contributed to the conversation. And regardless of where their position is in the district. So when Dr. Delsem says it was a very collaborative, critical sometimes, fever pitched conversation, it was a good thorough conversation for Team Lee Summit. And this was not just a one year conversation. It actually goes back two years, if not even prior to me being on the group, on the committee. So with that, and I say all of that to give you some sense that we really tried to dig and talk and look at a proposal or look at the conversations. And then Dr. Carlson and his his team really did some heavy lifting. Now, I agree with you, Dr. Hedrick, it would be nice to see maybe in a spreadsheet of some kind where that comes from. But I do know that they did a lot of work, quite a bit of work, probably hours and hours. I don't know how many, but many, I know. And then you had to suffer with me prior to a Rotary meeting and hear me talk for about an hour and a half. And that was probably painful as well, but I appreciate that time. But this is a big deal and it's a lot of money. And I truly appreciate Kathy Campbell saying, look, we as a group need to better understand where this one, three, five year projection is going. Not the least of which is where we've seen now we'll have three assistant superintendents or CFOs within a district that I think all of us need to be on the same page, very importantly. And that's a lot of change in a matter of three or four or five years. So I think it would help me tremendously and may help others on the dais understand where this budget issue is, not just these 2.7 or 2.4, however many millions of dollars are out there, but where this will take us longer, longer term. This also bodes well into Mr. Sparks' statement from an earlier topic. And that is stakeholders who are paying some taxes probably need to be engaged in this conversation as well as the last conversation. Because we have been very open as a as a district. And we've been very scrutinized, maybe rightfully so as a district. But I think that it would help our entire community to be able to see all of what is going on with the budget, with transportation, with all of that. And then may be there to let folks know, and there is no hidden agenda. We are presenting everything we have. We take all students as a public school district. We don't have a choice and we are moving forward in a very long term planning manner to a large degree because of the success of this team that's in this room. So a lot of words there, but it has been a two year, if not longer, discussion. Very weighted, tremendous homework and very well thought out. But I think we obviously need to know where this impacts us long, long, long term. And I appreciate, like I said, Ms. Campbell's comments, Mr. Sparks' comments, because I think all of that will help us largely as a district and a larger community move this ball forward as needed. Thanks.
Appreciate the comments, Board member Allen. Board member Sparks?
Sorry. This was my first mistake. It's okay. Listen, I'm not going to prolong it either. Again, I agree with what the other members, board members said. Thank you for the presentation. I think that is, it's essential that we take care of our teachers and staff. That's what makes this district great. And so I think with the budget, with making sure that we can afford it, that we're not putting ourselves in a bad position in a long term facet, that we need to make sure that our staff and our teachers are being paid and they're being paid adequately. So I would like to move forward with that additional information.
Appreciate that. If nobody else has anything, I have two real quick questions for you, just to clarify to be sure. Anybody who is retiring this year would still get the step, correct, if we approve it in May or they would not?
No, this is for next year.
For next year's employees, so July 1 employees, right? Okay, sorry, that's that's actually what I meant to say. So July 1 employees is who this impacts, right? And it looks like based on numbers that that's over half our staff. If I'm looking at that number, right, you know, in terms of 1,000 teachers, that's that's over half of our teachers. My second question though is, not to be a negative. Should a freeze have to happen coming up in a year or two or three or whatever? What are we going to put in place to ensure that then teachers coming in that this would not happen again?
It might have to look at board policy for there, because right now we have a year for year experience in board policy. I believe, is that correct, Deborah? It's in board policy and it goes up to 22 years?
Next year is 23. And then it sunsets in two years at 25. So then you all will have the opportunity to decide on that.
And I guess more than anything, that was, and I appreciate, I appreciate the answer to other board members. We do need to be thinking about, you know, is there a language that needs to be included in the policy to ensure that should a freeze happen, that somebody that was coming in would, that that freeze would be reflected on somebody coming into the district as well? It's just something to keep in mind so that we don't end up in the exact same situation five, seven years down the road. Something to just keep in mind. Any other questions or comments on this particular presentation? Thank you very much. And of course, thank you for all of the work that you did along with Team Lee Summit. That's fantastic.
Thanks for the opportunity on behalf of our staff.
Okay, so we obviously will probably see a recommendation coming here in a couple of weeks. We'll move on to 2.03. And this is where we are going to kind of move back into our literacy discussion along with the discussion surrounding dyslexia and the resources that are coming to the district or the discussion surrounding those particular issues. So we will turn it over to Dr. Kephart, I believe.
And I will get us started, but I have quite a crew that will be joining me this evening. I have Dr. Flack that will be joining me, Dr. Shelton, Dr. Mathis, Mrs. Sticknoff and Dr. Janeway. So plenty to be able to share and questions that you can certainly ask. We'll give time to do that at the end as well. Wanted to be able to focus, I know there have been several questions regarding our work in dyslexia. However, as we talk about our work in dyslexia, really wanted to be able to paint the bigger picture of literacy in LSR 7. As board members, you have seen much of this information in an email that was provided to you based on some questions from you a few, really a few weeks ago into almost a few months ago. But wanted to present that in presentation form and then be able to provide time for questions also. So as part of our journey, what you're going to hear tonight is you're going to hear information about our timeline and how literacy has developed in LSR 7 over the course of the last few years. About our ELA resources, the quality focus team that Dr. Flack has been working on with staff and with parents. You'll also hear about our student support process and our intervention time as well as professional development and teacher learning. And then we'll wrap up with a key, a couple of key points that you have heard before. But wanting to highlight, what is it out of this entire presentation to be able to touch upon or to have as that foundation moving forward? So as we get started, I wanted to share a little bit about our journey and I won't go through each of these years. But wanted to show as far back as prior years, but starting specifically with that 2016, 2017, which seems so long ago. But our work with response to intervention or response to instruction or RTI. Lee Summit was one of the districts in the metro area, one of the first districts to start looking at intervention and the look of instruction for struggling readers much sooner than other districts in the area, and I would even hesitate to say in the state. So as they started to explore as a district that RTI process, part of that was also including reading specialists in our elementary schools to support that work. In the beginning, our reading specialists were focused on pullout, pullout programs for students. Over the time, you will see some of that shift, not just for that pullout process, but also to be able to coach in tier one. So as we talk about building our classroom teachers to be stronger in literacy development and literacy instruction, some of that comes from every school having a reading specialist and some specialized training that they have had on coaching teachers in tier one literacy supports. And then I also wanted to be able to highlight the resources that have been utilized. So we have been utilizing resources like Hagerty, which is a focus on phonics for several years. However, very excited to be able to say in 2019, 2020, that's the first time in over 10 plus years that we have had a streamlined 18 elementary schools collaborative classrooms as our true resource for reading, writing, phonics and ELA support. So that is thanks to our board and helping that move forward in 1920. And then wanting to be able to share professional development. You'll hear a little bit more today about professional development in the area of literacy. But some of that comes not just with professional development in resources, not just with professional development on an annual basis in our schools with our reading specialists, but it also comes with at least two plus hours of training for all pre K through 12 teachers in the area of dyslexia. So that is a state requirement from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So you will hear today more about the professional development opportunities and some of our growth in that area too. So wanted you to get a timeline of where we have been. We are excited this year, as you have heard me say multiple times. We are excited to have NWEA as our second through eighth grade support in looking not only at data, but using that data to drive instruction. And a huge part of that, half of it, a huge part of that is ELA focused as well. And so we're glad to be able to have that as a continued measurement. And K through one using Ames Web, possibly another tool, but using Ames Web currently for kindergarten and first grade students. So again, you'll hear more about that process today with some of my fellow instructional operations members. So I'm going to send it to Dr. Flack. And team.
Thank you. I'm going to, we're going to talk a little bit about our literacy resources that we have, our ELA resources. And I'm going to quickly pivot to our curriculum specialist. I have Anne Sticknoff, our elementary curriculum specialist, and Dr. Lisa Janeway, our secondary ELA curriculum specialist. They're going to talk about the resources that we have available and certainly the changes that we've made over the last few years.
Good evening. I'm going to share a little bit about the elementary components of literacy and what students experience at the elementary level K6 right now. Currently, we have our collaborative classroom resource that was purchased. That includes three kind of arms of literacy, if you will. One is being a reader, one is making meaning, one is being a writer. As Dr. Kephart mentioned, Hagerty is a resource that we have used to teach phonemic awareness in K, in grades K through two for quite a long time. And really, we've chosen to continue that program as a supplement to what's provided in being a reader with collaborative classroom. So if you are entering kindergarten and you are in K through second, or kindergarten first or second grade, you will be really in like kind of engrossed and intensely working on learning to read. And so these grade levels really focus on the reading foundational skills and teaching kids how to read. In addition, including some comprehension as well. So the instructional approach in our primary grades is whole group shared reading. Kids have opportunities to participate in an explicit, direct instruction, whole group lesson. And then that's followed with differentiated small group instruction for reading. And when we think about differentiated small group instruction, that's really where we see kids grow and develop as readers. When we can identify what they can do and what they need help on, that's where that differentiation piece comes in and we can support them to grow and continue their reading development. Primary spends approximately 120 minutes a day in literacy instruction. Again, our resources being a reader for foundational skills. The Hagerty book supports direct explicit instruction around phonemic awareness. And then making meaning is the comprehension arm of the collaborative literacy suite. Supports that we have in place are that the classroom teacher delivers that core instruction, that tier one instruction in being a reader and making meaning. We also have support from the reading specialist. As Dr. Kephart mentioned, they have done a lot of work and study around coaching teachers and helping them kind of beef up and enhance their instruction in the tier one tip for all kids. And then included in our literacy program, we have multiple assessments and multiple ways we can measure reading growth. Being a reader assessments, we look at, there are some group progress assessments. There are individual reading assessments that we can use. There are mastery tests along the way that we administer to students to see, are they moving or are they stuck? Then, when we look in grade, when we look at grades three through six, there really is a shift in reading instruction. We kind of move away from teaching kids learn, to learn how to read to really a focus on reading to learn or reading to understand. And so our intermediate grades are focused on a program called Making Meaning. It is comprehension strategy instruction for kids in grades three through six. It does utilize a workshop approach, which means there is direct instruction, whole group. And then kids have a lot of time after that whole group instruction to do independent reading. And during that independent reading, the teacher has an opportunity to confer in conference with individual kids or with small groups of kids based on what kids need and need in terms of supporting their comprehension and developing those strategies that help us understand what we read. Making meaning is set up ideally, ideally in an ideal, perfect world, teachers in grades three through six would have 60 minutes. It can be done in 45 minutes a day. Again, this instruction, this is the core instruction that's delivered by the classroom teacher with support again from the reading specialist. And like being a reader, making meaning includes assessments as well that look, help teachers look at whole group. Kind of where is the class as a whole? We can also look at individual assessments through our conferences with kids and then through what they read and what they write and how they respond to text in their reading journal and in their making meaning notebooks that they have. So that's just a really brief overview of just tier one instruction and what students get at the elementary level. If there are students that are struggling, especially in the early grades, we have our SIPs in our, oh, what, before I move to that slide, this is just a picture of what the resources look like. So again, being a reader, K2 foundational skills, making meaning, that's our comprehension component. And we are phasing in our implementation of being a writer, which is the writing component of collaborative classroom. So when kids get stuck in that tier one instruction, So when kids get stuck in that tier one instruction and they are not moving or progressing as we would hope or as they should, we have a go-to intervention that aligns beautifully with our core instruction, and that's SIPs, which stands for the systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics and sight words. This intervention can be used to match student need. This intervention deals specifically with decoding and those early foundational reading skills. It does not address comprehension, but it will help those students that are really struggling to decode, sound out words, spell words. There are four levels in the SIPs intervention. Each level corresponds to a developmental stage of reading. And so it's nice that we can match exactly what students need in terms of decoding and their understanding of sight words to this intervention. There's ongoing assessment throughout the intervention to see are kids progressing? Do they need to continue in an intervention or can they go back right into regular tier one instruction in the classroom? And that's really the goal, is to get kids back into the tier one instruction to where they need to be. Being a reader, the foundational skills program that we are using is intentionally designed based on the SIPs intervention. And so those two align and marry together so that they're following the same scope and sequence. So if a student is struggling learning to read, SIPs helps because it slows that instruction down and it gives kids multiple opportunities to practice and get them caught up to where the instruction in the classroom is. And so it's nice because SIPs really is intentionally meant to work together so that there's a seamless transition between that tier one instruction and the intervention instruction. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Janeway.
So as you might expect, literacy instruction at the secondary level looks a little bit different. There are certainly some parallels, but in the sense that we continue that focus on reading to learn in grade seven through 12 that Anne just mentioned that occurs at the intermediate level at the elementary school. So not only are we focused on comprehension study at the secondary level, but we're really diving even deeper into that world of analysis. I would say that's the bulk of our instructional focus. At the secondary level, our units are inquiry-based. They are internally written by high-flying teachers of LSR seven, and they are driven by essential questions that are big and broad topics that give us lots of room to consult a wide variety of texts. It is an integrated approach. We read fiction, we read nonfiction. It provides opportunities for students to practice writing, language study, speaking and listening. And as Anne mentioned, we also philosophically parallel in the sense that there is direct instruction, but we also place quite a bit of emphasis on choice reading, trying to build readers by allowing them lots of time and space to make choices about their reading that are appropriate for their level and to build capacity through volume and stamina growth. We do operate, obviously, in a very different structure at the secondary level. So our instruction is driven by courses and by periods. So on average, our students are receiving between 45 and 50 minutes daily of ELA instruction. That's core instruction. We do use whole-class novels as part of that curriculum. They are district-approved and all students would be participating in those. In addition, though, our curriculum provides space for teachers to identify short texts. And then we also have those independent choice novels that students engage with. As Anne mentioned, our core instruction is delivered by classroom teachers. That's the bulk of the support. But we do operate closely and cooperate with our library media services and those folks and share a lot of the literacy development responsibility. Our assessment program is largely driven at this time by teacher-created assessment. However, we have done a great deal of work in the last three to four years to develop common writing rubrics around common writing tasks. We've also worked to develop internal reading assessments. We call them quarterly benchmarks. We've identified target standards and we're able to then collect data four times a year around those standards. And then, as mentioned previously, we do benefit greatly from the data that we glean from NWEA that we use at seventh and eighth grade. So this would be a snapshot of core instruction at the secondary level, grade seven through 12.
So as Dr. Kephart mentioned, we have a literacy quality-focused team that we started this year. And as you've already seen, you know, literacy spans K-12 and it affects multiple departments. It affects every student in our district. It affects our assessment department, curriculum, instruction, technology. So there's a lot of people involved in our literacy initiative in the district. And so with that, we felt it was important to get together a literacy-focused, quality-focused team, which puts teachers, administrators into the room to talk about our literacy programs, what processes we use, programs we use, et cetera, just to kind of coordinate those efforts. And so we've done this in the past. We've created a new quality-focused team this year. Our first task was really to look at tier three resources to support students who, you know, Anne talked about the SIPs program for struggling readers. That will support many of our students, but some students will need additional support for that. So we're going to need a tier three resource. And so the first task of that team was put together a smaller process action team to look at identifying a tier three resource. And so in February, we had the initial larger team. In March, we put the RFP team together and then sent out a survey because we know we have this district team, but we also wanted to get some input from parents. And so we sent out a survey to parents to see who would be interested in serving in a companion team, just to get that communication from our parents, because we've been hearing a lot about dyslexia and other reading struggles. And so we wanted to get those parents into a space where they could share their stories and provide some feedback and give us some guidance as we move forward. And so we sent that survey out. We had approximately 50 plus or minus parents who were interested in serving on that team. Initially, we thought we would have 35 to 40 parents serve on that team, but because it wasn't too many more and because we were able to meet through Zoom, we just added that group and said, let's just go ahead and have that entire group come in. And so we met with that group in April. One of the things that we did with that group was share the district RFP, the request for proposal for the tier three resource, and get their feedback on that. So we did that in April. Then the team took their feedback, went back and tweaked the RFP, sent that out. That is out now, and actually, it just closed recently. We're reviewing those resources with a potential vendor selection in the near future. And so that would be looking at that resource and then going back to the parents in May to share what resource we're recommending to the board and then hopefully to the board in June. Now, as we review those resources, if through the presentations, we don't find the right product, we may have to go back and republish the RFP or look some more. So we're anticipating that we would take a recommendation to the board in June. That's with the hope that the RFPs that come in are something that we're really going to want as a district. So with that, talking about the team, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shelton, I believe, for literacy supports.
So I'm going to try to put some pieces together, some things that you've heard before Dr. Mathis comes up and takes it a little bit further. And I'm going to talk about three areas of instruction. And if you were around back when RTI started, you would have seen a triangle. So some of you may remember a triangle that had different colors on it, usually green, yellow and red. And that was to reflect the three ways that we support students and the level of intensity and the number of students that respond to that. So I'm going to talk about core instruction, which you've already heard quite a bit about, targeted interventions, and then more intensive interventions. So if you've heard today, tier one, tier two, tier three, that's kind of the three tiers that we're talking about. Tier one being core instruction, tier two being more targeted intervention, and tier three being more intensive interventions. So as you heard earlier, we have a number of data points that we look at when we think about universal screening. That could range from grades at the secondary level, NWEA scores at all grades two through eight, as well as Ames Web and some other data points as well. And so through that universal screening, we're identifying students who are responding well to our core instruction, and it should be a lot of students. So because all students get our core instruction. They get that every day, as you heard from Mrs. Sticknoff and Dr. Janeway. They get that in reading and writing, and at the elementary level, around 120 minutes a day at the early grades, and that kind of scales up into secondary where they're getting 45 or 50 minutes a day of core instruction through courses. Again, we're monitoring data as we go and we're looking for students who are not being successful with that core instruction so that we can then lead them into a more targeted intervention. That targeted support, again, is identified through screening data, and now we're getting into something that's on top of core instruction. So students are still getting that core instruction that you heard about earlier, but in addition, they're moving on to another layer of instruction that could be provided by the classroom teacher, it could be provided by somebody outside of the classroom, and at the secondary level, provided through another reading course, could be a reading lab or a reading strategies course, if you've heard about those at the middle school or high school level. Students who are involved in targeted instruction are continued to be monitored as they go through that intervention. At the elementary level, we're currently using Ames Web to monitor that, and at the secondary level, they look at a number of data points, including grades, daily work, those quarterly benchmarks that Dr. Janeway talked about. So there's multiple data points that they look at. If students are not being successful, so we're kind of moving from all get core, some get targeted, now we're moving into a very targeted group or a very intensive group of students who need something additional because they're still not being as successful as we would like them to be. So we're identifying those students through that ongoing data collection, and now we're upping level of intervention. That might mean decreasing the ratio of teachers to students. It could mean increasing the frequency of the interventions, rather than three days a week, it might be five days a week. It could be changing to a different intervention, one that we might believe would be more successful, given the profile of the student. And at the secondary level, it could mean that a teacher does something different within that reading lab or reading strategies classroom. So again, as we continue to monitor students with that intensive intervention, we're looking for students to then kind of move back into tier two or back into tier one based on the success of the intervention. And so after that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mathis, and she's going to talk about the next step.
Thank you. Good evening. This is really about the connections to special education from all of the things that we've talked about. I think one of the main focus points that I would like to point out is that everything that we've talked about here is really to ensure that our students are being successful with the instruction that's provided in their classroom and that we are really adding additional support as needed, but that students can respond to that additional support, whether that be targeted interventions or intensive interventions, and be able to then slip right back into the core instruction and not require any additional support or services. But we also know that there are some students who meet eligibility for special education. So I think it's important to note that any student who's already on an IEP still has access to all of the supports that we've talked about here today. One of our goals in providing free and appropriate public education for students on IEPs is that they have access to the general curriculum as appropriate to meet their needs. And so a student being on an IEP does not exempt them from these types of interventions and supports that have been discussed tonight. I think the other point that I want to make is that we, as a district, because at the elementary level, we do utilize a response to instruction approach, the district moved several years ago to looking at identifying students for meeting eligibility for specific learning disabilities through a response to instruction model instead of a discrepancy model. And discrepancy is often referred to as wait to fail, if you've heard that terminology, because a discrepancy model waits until a student has an IQ in an average or above-average range and they are not performing at that same level that you would expect with that particular IQ score. Response to instruction eligibility is allowed through the Missouri State Plan, and so that is something that we utilize because we have this robust response to instruction program available. I did throw in a couple of slides. These are not my words. I took a picture for the first one to show that really this isn't something that, as a school district, we decide whether or not they meet eligibility. We have some specific parameters that go around that. And so I thought it was important to point out that this comes directly from our compliance standards and indicators, and it points out that that group of individuals really needs to take a look at all of the performance on classroom assessments, on state assessments, on the observations from the teachers and the staff who are working with students, and evaluations and other information provided by parents of the child. Sometimes that is in the form of that they are receiving services or support or have received a diagnosis of dyslexia that is part of that information that we would consider. I selected specifically basic reading scale, reading comprehension, reading fluency scale. There are other areas of specific learning disability, but because our topic tonight was reading, I wanted to focus just specifically on those. This does specifically point out that response to scientific research-based intervention method of eligibility from DESI. And so I thought it was important just to note that we have that documentation, that our procedures have been followed, and that students have been provided with core instruction, with targeted interventions, and with intensive interventions, and that we have the data that shows that they've been provided with those supports, and then we have not seen the progress as expected, so there may be reason to suspect a specific learning disability. I think it is also important to note that the state has some excluding factors, and so when collecting information, a few of those things might include that environmental or economic disadvantage be ruled out as a cause or limited English proficiency comes up at times. But also, a primary focus for tonight's topic is that lack of appropriate instruction in reading, including those essential components of a comprehensive literacy instruction. I think that's really important to note because what's been described to everyone tonight in terms of core targeted and intensive supports really do make up that comprehensive literacy instruction that allows us to look at that for students. That is specific to elementary. At the secondary level, we don't have the specific targeted interventions and intensive interventions for support. So if the data that is reviewed by a team causes them to suspect a disability, they would look to conduct a comprehensive evaluation and may look at a discrepancy model.
I'm going to speak a little bit about professional learning. I think any of our building leaders, district administrators, would tell you that high-quality professional learning is critical for student achievement, especially when that professional learning leads to a greater understanding of how students read and write and learn to read. And so to that end, we offer a variety of different professional development models with regard to literacy. Each year, we do the required two-hour DESI-mandated dyslexia training for all of our staff members. In addition to that, anytime that we have a new resource that we implement in the district, that resource is tied to professional learning specifically for that resource. And so we have done that with being a writer, being a reader, making meaning, and all of those components that we move forward. Oftentimes, that is offered by the company that we partner with to bring that resource to us. In addition, we also use our building reading specialist to partner with the PD that goes out with that. We also offer building-level PD that is often done by our reading specialist and our department chairs. And then the last piece is, over the last few years, we've moved to letters training for our teachers. Letters, as we've shared at the board before, is a program that teaches, it's basically the science of reading. It's a two-year program, about 44 hours each year. It's kind of like getting a master's degree in reading. It's very intensive. And so last year, we did not do the training because of COVID. Prior to that, we had 44 of our teachers go through the first module of letters. They will go through the second module of letters next year, and then we had some district trainers done. So they, some district trainers trained so they can come in and do training for other teachers that we want to roll out. So that's a pretty intensive program. One of our plans is to really take that letters training and try to provide it for the masses in ways that we can hopefully get those folks together and put some smaller modules together that could go out to the staff, so not each staff member has the capacity to do such a large amount of training, so we can get that out to others. So that's our professional learning focus and any, with our dyslexia resource, our struggling readers, tier three resource that we get, that will have a PD component. struggling readers, tier-three resource that we get, that will have a PD component that goes with it as well.
So as we wrap up and give you a few minutes for questions, wanted to be able to share a couple of key points, and as we move forward, some of that, some of those conversations in terms of dyslexia, just a reminder to you that as a school district, we cannot diagnose a student with dyslexia, and in previous years, prior to the state mandating our support of students with dyslexia, it wasn't even a topic that we could talk about. So we are very glad that we can talk about students that struggle in reading, as you heard today, but also that we can look at students that have dyslexic tendencies or would fall in the at-risk category that you have heard on SheaWits, which is a dyslexia screener that we utilize, that is also supported from DESI and their work with dyslexia. So we will continue to screen our students through the process that you heard, providing core instruction and that universal screen, as then we look at targeted and interventions through intensive support also. So as we wrap up today and give you some questions, I wanted to leave you with a few key points, and the first of those key points, as you heard, our response to instruction, that key that we have on using data to drive our decision-making, making sure that we have a universal screen for our students, that we add that dyslexia screener when we have students that are in intensive or targeted interventions, that we are progress monitoring every six to eight weeks in those intervention times, that we're going to continue to focus on the needs of our struggling students through the intervention process, but we also have IEPs and 504s, as you heard from Dr. Mathis, depending on the data that is provided through those programs and interventions. And then also our use of collaborative classrooms, we talk very frequently in IOT that we don't want to out-intervene the core, so the core instruction is the most important for our students, and so as we are using that comprehensive literacy program, it is very key for those reading skills, those comprehension skills, and the writing skills. But we know that there is a need for tier-two, as you've seen with SIPs, and a tier-three intervention for intensive needs that Dr. Flack and his team are working on. And then continuing with Dr. Flack and his team on that parent input opportunity, wanting to continue to grow that throughout the coming years, not just in terms of dyslexia, but in terms of continued literacy support and literacy needs from our, hearing from our families and from our teachers as well. So with that, I will leave it, we are all going to be up here for some great questions, so I'll stay here, but I may be sending it back to somebody else as you have questions.
First, thank you to all of you for being here tonight and putting together all of this information. I'm sure there will be a few questions to board members, we have about 15 minutes to do questions here on this. Board Member Sparks?
I want to do some cartwheels right now. I am so excited. I will do it, I will do it. I just can't be in the suit, I have to be in some jeans or something. Listen, this is awesome to hear. The one question that I have is, while we're looking at a student and they're receiving their core instruction, and then they're moving to targeting intervention, and then obviously, as we see those things progress, even though we can't diagnose students with dyslexia, what type of conversations are we having with families so that they can then make the necessary steps of making sure that we can assist them of getting the needs for their students so that they can actually achieve? To tag on to that question, when a parent feels like they're not, their student is not being targeted with having issues, what type of advice can we give parents so that they can basically share concerns that they're noticing with their students, that they're meeting those resources? And then one last thing just popped in my head, if parents or families are also having issues with reading, because a lot of times, if parents are having issues, then those students are also having those same issues, how have we thought about what type of thing we can help the family holistically when it pertains to reading?
Okay, let me make sure that I answer all three of your questions, okay? So come back to me if I don't capture them all. First of all, when we look at SheaWits, so SheaWits we provide for K-33 students, and it shows an at-risk, so it puts a student in a not-at-risk or an at-risk category based on the universal screen of AmesWeb. So once we see that, then we have our teachers and our reading specialists having those conversations with families to say, here's what we're noticing, we're noticing that there are tendencies in readings that could be, that could be identified as dyslexic, however, that's not something we can diagnose. Whether we diagnose it or not, we're going to continue to support your student as they struggle with reading. So thus SIPs, and we're seeing that need for a tier-three and intensive support for dyslexia. So then, your second question was, if we have parents that have questions on struggling readers or what that, how, who they can reach out to. We have, our reading specialists have a huge background of knowledge and foundation in reading. Many of our reading specialists have gone through letters training themselves or through their reading specialist degree, they have those, they have that depth of literacy skills. So I would always suggest to reach out to teacher, but also to reach out to reading specialist and principal, because they're able to walk through with parents, here's the data that we're collecting on your student, here's the progress monitoring that we're going to do, and we're seeing successes, or we need to continue to provide interventions, and here's next steps, and here's what you can be doing at home to help your student. As far as parents, that's not something that recently we have talked about, we actually have had some conversations in academic services about some type of parent university or supports for parents, so that may be a future conversation, but not one that we have had yet. Did I get all three? Okay.
Board Member Fritchy?
Thank you very much. Great presentation, thanks for taking us through everything there. Just, this is, oh, first of all, I just want to say, I'm really excited to be named along with Board Member Sparks to the parent dyslexia team, so that's, I'm really happy about that because it's a passion of mine, so thank you very much for doing that, thank you. When you talk about intensive interventions, this is a quick answer for you, I'm sure, would that be our students who need a tier-three intervention?
Yes, so as we talk, much like what Dr. Shelton had said, as we talk targeted interventions, that would be a tier-two, as we talk in intensive, that's that red in the triangle, tier-three. So our most intensive needs, as we try and change some of that language from being in tiers, we look at core targeted and intensive.
Very good, okay, my second question, oh, go ahead.
Can I clarify? At the elementary level, we have been terming that initial evidence-based intervention, that first go-to level, as a tier-two-A intervention, and so that may be vocabulary that people are familiar with, and then a tier-two-B would be more intensive and scientifically research-based in nature. Tier-three is kind of what we're exploring in terms of a more targeted, programmatic, explicit instruction resource for students that are not responding to our current set of interventions we have.
Very good. Now, if parents are, do have questions, and you guys are using your terminology, and I know you can't diagnose dyslexia, but how does a parent go about getting more information? Do they have to take their child to a professional to get a test?
So that's a great question, and one that, again, we're going to provide struggling readers support, and that through our buildings. If a parent wants to have that diagnosis, they would need to reach out to their physician and move from that, from that side, because dyslexia itself is a medical diagnosis.
Right, right, okay, and then you mentioned letters training, and I know there's a bunch of folks out there in TV land and even here who don't understand what letters training is. Why is letters training so great for our teachers to have?
So LETTERS stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, and so it is, it's an intensive professional development program that steps you through the brain research behind how students learn to form letter, so it really goes from the very beginning of how do we start to learn to read, all the way through the entire process, so it's a, it's a two-year, pretty extensive training process. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, I was sort of familiar with it, but I wanted to make sure that folks out there who just heard you say letters, that they knew what that was.
There are two modules for it, each module is a book, basically, and each week you go through a chapter and kind of go through as a group, and there are assessments afterwards, it's pretty intensive.
I've heard teachers say, though, that's the best training I've ever had.
It is amazing training, yes.
Thank you.
So I want to add to that, so in my previous stop, we did letters training for all K-2 teachers and all K-6 reading specialists, and I went through a lot of it with them. It is intense, it'll wear them down, but every teacher too, of course, has the best PD they ever had. Not only does it go through the science of it, but also goes through the pitfalls that readers potentially could have at each part of the step of learning how to read, and then strategies on how to address each, it is pretty powerful training.
Board Member Allen?
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of different things, this is a pretty comprehensive report and tremendous, so thanks for all the, thanks for all the time and effort, and a lot of horsepower on this wall right here, it's pretty amazing. It may stop before it hits Kevin, I'm just teasing that.
Kevin could jump up and answer any of these questions.
I'm teasing, I love the guy, I'm just saying. Bro hug kind of thing, I'll stop. Lost my train of thought, not exactly. So, something that was mentioned and somewhat hit pretty quickly, but I think might be helpful along the way, is to discuss how cooperative literate and cooperative literacy in our collaborative classrooms was mentioned, but part of that discussion was around library and media specialists, and that impact is massive, and there are some emails that I think we've all received regarding librarians and their need and their impact on not just students, but also teachers, so I hope that we can get into that broader conversation later, and understand where we are with that personnel decision, different than this, but a huge decision, and the travel and all the things that they're doing out there, and also what the impacts from the physician across the hall, the changes in that, what that does to the library staff. So, that aside, I want to make that note for later, I've seen different references in here, like annual PD, I see pre-K through 12, annual dyslexia training per DESI, and then in other areas, I see only K through 6 or K through 12. So is pre-K a situation where we're also trying to identify through parents as teachers these issues, and can it be referenced more often than once or twice? Because our district is broadly, broadly pre-K through 12, so I don't know if that's, I mean, I would like to understand how we, through PAT or Great Beginnings or whatever, help identify those challenges, struggles, whatever you want to call it.
Sure. We're at the early childhood level from parents as teachers through Great Beginnings or Satellite Classrooms across the district, we engage in developmental screenings on a regular basis. Students are all identified for programs to attend our program because they've had screening developmentally and have shown some need, and so that could be pre-academic skills that may impact reading, that could be social-emotional behavioral skills, a variety of reasons could have a student getting additional support through the early childhood level. So they, where they're not necessarily teaching reading, they're teaching foundational skills to prepare for pre-reading, and so they are definitely communicating with parents about developmental abilities and where there may be some strengths and some opportunities to grow, and then continuing that conversation as we talk transition into kindergarten.
And I mean, I think that's helpful to know that, but also helpful for incoming students into kindergarten, first grade, right, ideally, and...
But to be clear, we're not necessarily screening for dyslexia specifically at early childhood.
Well, but this, but a large part of this discussion here included not just dyslexia, so I appreciate that being stated, and, you know, dial this back a number of years, when some school districts were stripping PAT, we found a way to continue to fund PAT in LSR7, which went a long, long way, and when, I think we truly have a long-term commitment, and we'll continue with that, I hope that we continue to see more pre-K through 12 being referenced, because I don't want that importance being lost. Do we have, a little bit of a side note, I guess, but we have this meeting coming up with teacher, sorry, parents in May, right? Do we have employees engaged in that as well, like I know of a number of teachers who have children who have dyslexia and may or may not be in those conversations, or are they in the conversations, or is that...
Yeah, there are a few employees that are on that parent team as parents as well.
Okay, awesome, thanks. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, no problem. Board Member Hedrick?
Sure, just two quick things. One is that the parent meeting that we had a couple of years ago, I was there, and I think one of the things that really struck me, and it still does to this day, is in terms of the frustration parents feel when they have a medical diagnosis of dyslexia, and they don't feel like they're getting the support and services that they need. So I guess, how have we kind of changed how we incorporate that into our evaluations?
Well, I think that that was pre-having a comprehensive literacy program, so we didn't have collaborative classrooms at that time, and we didn't have SIPs, so we were just rolling out collaborative classrooms, and then this year, starting to use SIPs more comprehensively. So now that we have those programs, we're also seeing the need for that dyslexia resource too, so we needed to be able to have our core instruction, our collaborative classrooms, see what we were missing, see what holes we had, fill those with SIPs and an additional support for interventions, and now seeing that we need that additional intervention. So yes, some of that has been systematically building, building our literacy program even richer than we had it before.
Right, just one other quick question, on the SIPs, do we have data to determine if that is an effective strategy for dyslexic students?
So we have, so we have actually been having that conversation, because while SIPs has assessments that move them from one level to the next level, there's not an overall assessment, so we are hearing from, on the data consults that I mentioned before, we are hearing from our building principals, we're seeing, we're seeing growth in our students. Where we're going to see that, we're going to see that with our AmesWeb spring data, and we're going to see that from our NWEA data. So we don't have specific SIPs, like an assessment with SIPs, but it's that overall universal screen that we will see growth from students, so we're excited to pull that when we can get it in the spring.
So then I guess a follow-up, sorry, would be then, how does that then transition from SIPs, which I understood is like tier-two, correct, is that correct, to this tier-three then interventions? Does that make sense?
So I would say that those students who aren't successful in the tier-two would be recommended for the tier-three resource. And then I also wanted to add to your question about the parents and the frustration piece, one of the things that we did at our parent meeting was spend a significant amount of time just listening to parents, and for those parents that are watching, thank you for being there, because that was a huge benefit for us to listen to that, so we're committed to keeping that door open and continuing to hear their voices, because we got a tremendous amount of really productive feedback from that group.
Well, just so you know, we've heard from some of those parents who are very appreciative that you asked for their voice and are listening.
And before I get to you, Board Member Campbell, for kind of the last question, I would like to offer on that one, one comment, which is, even with the parent meeting, even with all of the resources that are being dedicated to this particular issue, there is still quite a bit of disconnect from some parents, not necessarily all, but some parents who feel that the resources that are being offered and what we should be doing with all of the resources that we have, isn't actually what is happening, either through a rushed process of trying to get kids into a resource or them getting missed. So there still is a disconnect between what we are able to offer and what is actually getting offered and done within the buildings, and some of that could be obviously with the new resources that we have, trying to even get them implemented, so I do want to understand that that could be happening, but I just want to offer that those comments are still pretty pervasive, that there still is a disconnect between what we're trying to offer and what is actually happening within each individual building, and that lack of consistency from one building to another.
And that's good feedback, and what we, that's feedback that we wanted to hear as we move forward, and remember, as we go through that timeline, our tier-three resource was the, you know, the task of right now, but as we move forward, we'll be looking at procedures and policies and all of those components, so we'll continue to review that feedback and try to get better and better.
Right, and that wasn't meant to be a negative, just, yeah, sure, sure, perfect, perfect, right, and I think that that's a great next step, right, that we need to be going. Board Member Campbell, you get last but not least, so there you go.
Well, share the passion, Board Member Fritchy, sharing the cartwheels, Board Member Sparks, sharing the connect-the-dots, Board President Ryan Murdock. So my question is, we've got this... So my question is, we've got this parent dyslexia team. I hear literacy quality focus team. So it sounds to me, and I'm verifying with you, that's a joint force, that the go-forward would be monitoring and evaluating how these steps are progressing our students, the effort and the opportunities coming forward, and then making sure that that is helping all of our students that do continue to struggle into the tier-two and tier-three. Am I tracking correctly?
Yes, a quality-focused team is a team that is not, a Pratt would be a team that is a short-term, we're going to fix this one problem and then disband the team. A quality-focused team is a long-term team. So we plan to meet with this team in perpetuity. That doesn't mean that they're all signed up forever, so. It's not the Hotel California, you can get out. But in reality, we do, we do want to have that continued. So it's a district team and a companion parent team, so we can get that feedback, and it's a little bit challenging to have that entire group meet together. So we wanted to have a companion team, so we can really get to the issues and needs of those particular groups and move forward. But the focus is to continue to get feedback and bring it back to both teams.
And if parents going forward would like to participate in the parent dyslexia team, who should they reach out to?
They can certainly reach out to me. One of the things I think that will be on our task to do is to talk about what a rotation might look like. Fifty people on Zoom is manageable. Fifty people plus in face-to-face may become a little more challenging, so we may need to look at what an appropriate rotation might look like, but they certainly can reach out to me as we move forward, and we can figure that piece out.
I appreciate all this information. Really excited. Thank you.
Now, see, we said Board Member Campbell was going to be last, but I'm, Board Member Sparks, it's all you. Right, it's all you.
Really quick. I just think that since the letters is so beneficial to our teachers and to our students, that we need to look at incentives of making sure that all of our teachers are taking advantage of that opportunity.
To speak a little bit to incentives, we did offer graduate credit for those teachers who went through that program, which is, you know, somewhat of, if you already have your master's degree in 45 hours, that's not much of an incentive, but for those people that need it, it is. But we will continue to look at how to incentivize that process.
Thank you to all of you for being here and helping answer a lot of these questions. Just like all topics, Board Members, send questions if you have further questions. This does conclude the work session that is being streamed, and we will move upstairs for our MSBA meeting. Thank you all very much.